All right, it's 6:45 and I'm going to call to order the June 29, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Kristy Coke.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Ashley Henson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone that has any citizen comments?
We have one citizen comment.
Okay, and who is that?
It should be in front of you. It's Carrie Fossler.
Okay. Hello, Carrie. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. I've come to tell you how much I respect you. The very first time I ever spoke at City Hall was at a P&amp;Z meeting in 2019 when Commissioner, now Commissioner Barrow and I were sitting in the back row and we both had zone changes on the agenda. And I was terrified, not because the commission was terrifying, but just I was terrified. I had all my notes written out. And what happened was, what unfolded was a really beautiful process. It was a 55-minute discussion for my zone change in another, in another project. And it was questions and answers and really, really rich dialogue between not only the dais, but the city manager at the time and the staff. It was like this, the city, the new codes were just passed like the month before, and this was the very first zone change, line of zone changes that were up for, for, up for debate. And it was just really cool to be a part of that time. I really, it was, all the faces are changed. What's so different? But I wanted to tell you like how, how it felt to be here and like how, what an important, what an important role you have as like the, not only the gatekeepers, but like the mayor-appointed residents of Bastrop and to bring your concerns. And I appreciated being in that process. I didn't even, we didn't win that night. We didn't get it. We didn't, we got denied, but, and we didn't even know we were on city council agenda the next week. And we didn't know we could come back until someone told us. But what happened was through hearing the concerns, we, and, and the, and the concerns that we didn't have enough community input, we went back to our community. We talked to our neighbors. We asked them to write letters. We asked them to come. So we were enlivened in the process because we were educated about it. And, and it all started right here for me. And I wanted to thank you for, for your part. It's, it's holy work what you're doing is to bring, bringing the resident sentiment and the concerns, and I appreciate that. And, and part of what's probably not on the application process is the part where you're going to have to be digging through, you don't have to, but to do your job, to do your job well is to be digging through the old videos and talking to people and driving around and looking at sites and, and being very thoughtful. So not only is it your time up here, but it's your time away from your families and your time spent getting context and research and perspective. And I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you and all you bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
If, if I can just say a quick response. I, I really appreciate that, Carrie. You're a big part of the reason I moved here. And I think, you know, with, with all the changes going on, it's important to keep in mind why I think we all want to be up here, and that's to serve our community and help our community. And you've always epitomized that for me. So, thank you.
Do we have any other citizens comments? No? Okay, so on to items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider, consider action to approve minutes, meeting minutes from the May 25, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, submitted by Melissa.
Motion to approve?
Second. Roll call.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Kristy Coke.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 3B, consider action to approve minute meetings from the May 25, 2023 Impact Fee Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second. Roll call.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Kristy Coke.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
Item 3C, consider action to approve meeting, meeting minutes from the June 8, 2023 Planning and Zoning Workshop Meeting Minutes.
I will make a motion to approve.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
I don't think I was at that.
Oh, what?
June 8, was I at that meeting?
3C, you are not here, I don't think.
At the workshop? I don't think I was at the workshop.
No.
No.
You can still vote on that.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wait, I didn't get to vote.
Kristy Coke.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll get it together, y'all. We'll get it together.
All right, item 3D, consider action on an ordinance amending the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 3.1, place type zoning districts and adding Article 3.4, planned development districts on, for the purpose of considering planned development districts within the city of Bastrop.
Good afternoon, Commission. We're going to go through this workshop hopefully very quickly. So just to remind you, PDD is what we call it, a planned development district. Sometimes you'll hear it called a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. It's essentially a marriage of platting and zoning all at one time to get us to see a 50,000-foot level of what that development impact would be. And it gives us the ability to be flexible within the boundaries of that development. So why is that required? Sometimes developments are a little bit in the unknown. So for example, in a, I'll use the example of the Burleson East. In a Burleson East shopping center, as it's going through in the current development process, you go through a neighborhood regulating plan and you go through a process and you are essentially married to a site plan. That sometimes doesn't always fit market conditions as they change. So a PDD would give staff some flexibility. So for example, in this particular instance, one large retailer has decided to change the footprint and the orientation of the building. That would give staff some flexibility to allow those changes within that orientation without coming back to the planning commission for any amendment of any approved plans. It doesn't mean that staff can circumvent any of the necessary streets, any of the necessary water, wastewater, any of the necessary infrastructure, any of the necessary master plans. It means we have some flexibility within the boundary site itself. So the mechanics, it, we still have to do a base zoning. So for example, in a P4 or a P5, you still have to do the base mechanics of a zoning. The simple thing about a PDD is I can overlay what you normally call is warrants, won't have to come as a warrant. We can try to fit within that particular puzzle. And anything that needs a tweak, an amendment, a variance, those kinds of things, or try to work it as much as possible so that it does sort of soften the edges of that square peg into that round hole. But again, still having the flexibility. Staff will make recommendations. It'll come to the commission why we believe those recommendations make sense for this particular development. It is treated like a zoning change. We have to have notice in the newspaper. The neighbors get to have a say. Everybody within, you guys have now changed it to 500 feet, has a say. And it, it sits, it's its own zoning district in the zoning map. So it's married to that piece of property until a change of zoning comes forward. These are the things throughout our conversations and our, our report that our consultant did. These are, these are areas that we call common ground. We all like the fact that we like our eclectic, authentic Bastrop. We want to be stewards of the environment. We want to be stewards of the people and not price people out of their homes, et cetera, et cetera. We like our dark sky light. We don't want light pollution everywhere. These are, these are all components of what we have said in all of our studies in the B3 to protect. So we keep these things in mind moving forward. These are the things we know as well as the transportation master plans. These are some of our guiding principles. So the process, they come into you with a, well, they come into staff with a concept plan. We work through the mechanics of that plan. You, you are not presented with the super-specific details that are in a plat, for example. You're, you're not given the drainage calculations. You're not doing any of that. Staff can still work through that. What we are agreeing on is a concept and a, an essential footprint of how things could work. We're still flexible enough. If the plan shows a retention pond, but the retention pond doesn't have capacity, for example, and they've got other creative ways to do it, like storing it off the buildings in a tank and using that to re-irrigate later, we have the flexibility to do those things that today requires an amendment. Today, public improvement plan agreements go to the council. So it's again, just bringing it down to the staff level, making sure that the mechanics work before we bring it. We're not trying to flood the city. We're not trying to create undue traffic. All of those guiding principles are still honored. And again, it's a recommendation to you. If there are things in the plan that don't look right, smell right, you absolutely have the ability to question, ask, and then ask staff to go review it again, ask the applicant to make any amendments. Same, same process. The, the residents who are within that notification area or within the city, if they have issues with the plan, still have the ability to come at public comment. So we went through this. This is some of the misconceptions. We don't make all of the decisions, but we are the resident experts that continue to do this on a day-to-day basis. So it's our job to make sure we're not doing anything that's going to be detrimental to the city in the long run. Again, P&amp;Z notice, if the council, if you guys move something forward to the council and the council says, yeah, well, I don't, I don't really know about that. They might have agreed, but nah, I don't know. We might want to tweak this little section of the plan. Even the council has the authority to do that and the ability to do that. If people don't hear about it at the P&amp;Z level and you only had maybe one person, but that person after your approval goes to his neighbors and says, this thing is the worst thing ever. You need to show up to city council and you need to like show up en masse, and they show up en masse, that might change council's opinion and that might require some additional tweaks. So we still have the multiple levels of protection that you would in a zoning case. It's not spot zoning. It does follow the path, but it's not spot zoning because like I told you, we have to follow the base of the zoning. I can't just arbitrarily say, oop, I like commercial right here in the middle of the residential district. Not how that works. We won't ever get good connectivity. We have a master transportation plan. We make every single attempt to honor that master transportation plan. We're about to go through the traffic impact fee exercise, not trying to deviate from any of that. But do some of those connections make sense? Does an outlet that doesn't have an appropriate exit and a right-of-way reservation, for example, that we know is not going to go anywhere, but it's shown on a map, it's shown on a piece of paper, and we might want it later on when, I'll give you the same example of Burleson. We show Blakey at the very rear as it's drawn on the plan would take out the daycare and take out a couple of businesses at the back of Blakey. We know we have to come around. We know that. The, the meat in the middle to the developer was, give us a right-of-way reservation for a period of time. I believe it's five years. If we can't figure out what we're going to do with Blakey in five years, or we can't acquire the other right-of-way that we need, or we haven't bought out those businesses, or whatever happens, it goes back. So I'm not asking for the sake of asking. I have to have a plan and the plan has to make sense. And if the plan doesn't make sense, we should be back here and back at city council saying, hey, this doesn't make any sense. Why are we doing this? And it is not an attempt to undermine the code, not at all. It's an attempt to work through the code. There are a lot of things in the B3 code today that are conflicting and I know have unintended consequences because we see them every single day, every Thursday especially, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tuesday because we took in applications on Monday and Thursdays because we're going through development review. Those things need to be brought to light. And they, they shouldn't be brought to light through a warrant because that is a variance of the code. It should be brought to light that this part of the code doesn't work. Let's work through that. And let's let planning commission and council understand what doesn't work. It was meant to be a living, breathing document and it hasn't, it hasn't functioned that way. Any questions?
I have two questions.
Yes.
One, you are continuing expansion of your team. You've hired new people. And even though the sole decision-making skills won't, or the sole decisions won't be on them, do you have the confidence in the team that you're building to be able to be creative within this PDD to make things happen efficiently and effectively?
I do. I do. Because we are, we've brought things in-house. It's an entirely different thing to deal with the third party that we sometimes see on Zoom who's reading the black and white in the book and, and says, here is what has to happen. Staff still at the DRC takes those comments and we're still digesting them. We've spent a lot of time talking about, okay, this is the request. Does it make sense? This is the request of the engineer or Public Works or whoever. Does this really make sense? Is this what the planning commission and council intended? So yes, I do. I have, I have the utmost confidence in the staff we're building. I don't have a development engineer yet. So anybody who knows an engineer, we're hiring.
Question number two is that if this all goes through, what sort of timeline or paradigm can we build where the city staff gets information to P&amp;Z and city council saying, this is what works, this is what doesn't work, and then we can come to a resolution together?
So ideally, what should happen is as we go through the code and there are things that require 27 variances, for example, every quarter, we should be going, okay, at development review, in the past 12 development review committees, we have faced this issue. Planning and zoning, here are the projects that this issue has faced. We need to bring an amendment. This is why this issue doesn't make sense. That's the living, breathing part of it. The complexity of the code, not just the B3, but of codes, is when you touch one thing, it has a domino effect to others. And a lot of times, that's staff's hesitancy to bring an item forward because while they know it doesn't work in this piece, ooh, what's that going to do later on to something else? And so I'll, I'll give you an example in terms of the city of Odessa, in terms of drainage. So they amended their code. They had some drainage improvements. I went to visit. The city manager says, please come with me to this development over here. We never had flooding before. I don't know why it's flooding. There's an issue. It's by the golf course. There's plenty of green space. It shouldn't flood. Well, the Public Works Director, in their ultimate belief that they could maintain things that were concreted better as opposed to grass, had concreted all of the drainage ditches so that staff wouldn't have to spend the time on slope mowers. That's great, but grass provides two things. It cleans the water and it slows it down. And so by removing all of the grass and now requiring their drainage plans to have concrete, you're speeding up the water. So the downstream effect of that was huge. Did we understand in the short term that concrete in the ditches was maybe not a great idea? Maybe to some portion of the ditch, yes, to stop erosion, but not the entire ditch. Just the long-term impact of the unintended consequences, I think, is what makes it really hard for us to pinpoint that this one thing is what's causing the problem. Because it's often a symptom of a couple of problems.
So I would just continue to urge whenever we make some kind of decisions that we include the citizens, that we inform the citizens. And I don't know how you would propose to do that, but I think it's a critical piece. And it's going to be difficult for me personally to support any kind of major changes without that happening. Because I feel like I'm up here representing them. And so I would hope that, that would be part of our plan moving forward. The other thing I'd like to say is that what happened this week, you know, I don't want us to feel like because of what happened this week, we've got to hurry up and make decisions. I don't think that's the right approach for us to take. There was a lot of time spent on getting the code developed. I think we need to systematically and thoroughly look at everything so that when we, everybody recognizes there needs to be changes. I don't think that you're going to find any resistance from us on that. But as we move forward, I think we need to do it in a way that is systematic, that you can show us what's not working and what is working based on these previous things that came before you. And I think you'll find this commission pretty supportive of it, if you, if that's the approach we take. I'm going to have a problem if it's just, we've got to make this decision tonight. We've got to make that decision tomorrow just because there are several council members that believe we're not moving fast enough. So, and I'm hoping that we won't be in trouble for it.
No, 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 no. And that's, that's going to come up in your next slide about, hopefully, the next quarter's approach.
So I just would like to add that I like, I really like this idea. I like the idea of the flexibility. To me, that's what makes Bastrop, Bastrop is having that flexibility and working with the citizens. I've spoke to you about it before. I definitely want to see the right businesses come in for Bastrop. I don't want to hold anything coming in, but I want to make sure that those businesses are ones coming in that also support and help the community. And given that flexibility, I think that'll get the right businesses in. Definitely involving the citizens to get the support is, is very important. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to say too much, but just basically, I think this is a great idea. Flexibility is important. It gives everyone options. It doesn't confine us to one idea. And again, because that's not what Bastrop is. Right? So I'd like to continue looking into this and you have my support.
Thank you. What I, what I would like to tell the commission is the B3 was a, a difficult process. Staff was learning it as it was adopted. Internal staff will tell you, too much, too fast. There's also some dirty little secrets in the B3 code that I'm not sure the commission fully understood the consequences of. And so my job is to bring you the real-world example. It looks doggone pretty up there on the, in the book and on the screen when I show you some of the images. But I know this commission and I know this community and I know you didn't intend to drive somebody out of their home because they need to do X or they need to do Y. And I don't believe that was the intention of, of any elected official or appointed official before or after. What we struggled with is a super full comprehension of the unintended consequences. So anytime I bring you something, I want to bring you the process by which we're going to execute. And I'm going to bring you a real-world example of why it does or doesn't work, or why it is or isn't necessary. Every single week is another, is another adventure. Every single week. When we talked about traffic impacts today, and I'll, because it's fresh on my mind and these three ladies have to live it, this is our front line right here, these three ladies. So when we speak, we have to be consistent because they're the ombudsman to spread the message. We talked about impact fees today. Impact fees for a, an existing house in our residential area who is adding an additional dwelling unit in the back. We talk about the B3 being affordable. The dirty secret is, it is not affordable and it is anything but. This particular remodel to this accessory dwelling unit was about a $40,000 remodel. The impact fees that needed to be paid for that remodel were upwards of $14,000. I don't think y'all meant that. I don't think y'all meant that. We do have an obligation as a city to maintain the water, maintain the sewer, the impact to each one of those systems. Yes, absolutely. I agree. There is a fee that should be paid because they're reserving their place in the treatment plant. But I don't think we meant it so hard that people cannot do what they want to do on their property, nor that we meant it to be so hard that you now cannot do what you want to do on your property, nor do I believe we meant it to be so hard that a lot that has been traditionally used for single-family today can now have six units on it. Six. Six. Because that's what our code allows. Without any notice, because that's the zone. Don't know that that's what we intended. So I want to bring you real world.
Yeah, I'm going to say one more time. I'm, I'm not, I'm not being an obstructionist.
No, no, and I don't believe anybody is.
I'm open to the changes. I think it's a great idea for you to bring us examples. It'll help me understand what the problem has been, as well as the way to get it fixed. I'm all for that.
If, I can say something. So I, I agree with Commissioner Parsons. I think our duty on this board is to represent the citizens of Bastrop. And when this was first brought before us, I certainly had many questions. And I requested of you that we have a town hall. And I wanted to hear from everyday citizens as well. And I attended and I took notes and I counted, I think, over 50 people, you know, mom and pop business owners, neighbors of mine, who all supported this and said it was necessary and gave many examples of why it was necessary. And I certainly can understand the desire to, to wait and to want more information. But I, I think it's important to remember that failure to make a decision is a decision itself. And I trust in the staff and I think we are going in the right direction. So I'm prepared to make a motion.
What are you making a motion on?
Approving the PDD.
Approving, okay.
All right. So I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the B3 Code, Article 3.1, place type zoning districts and adding 3.4 planned development districts for the purpose, for the purpose of considering planned development districts for the city of Bastrop.
I second.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Kristy Coke.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you in just a sec.
Okay, on to item 3E, consideration, consider action to approve the Casada Preliminary Plat being 22.64 acres out of farm lots 64 and 65, located west of North Main Street within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown on in Exhibit A.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is the Casada Preliminary Plat. It really shouldn't take long. It's a 22.64 acre. That is just, and you saw in your packet, the, the location map. It is just south of Sayers Road on North Main. It is, it's previously had the drainage, preliminary drainage plan approved, the preliminary infrastructure plan approved, and they plan to do a dedication of right-of-way around the border of the property that you see here that will allow access to the tracks in the rear. Again, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions. But basically, we'll have two detention ponds handled, designated for emergency overflow and things of that nature. Two driveway connections off of Main to give you a little more detail. But we recommend approval at a staff level. And with that, I'll take any questions.
How many units?
For the preliminary plat, I don't know if we have a total unit count yet. Not for the plat, anyway. This is just one lot.
It's a lot.
It's one big lot.
Just to be clear, they just want to build a new road, right?
They're going to build multiple housing units inside of this 22-acre area. So, and then we're taking access off of two points at North Main. The remainder of the stuff will take private roads interior and they'll be taking access off these roads here around the edge.
And what sort of infrastructure does the city already have in that area?
This is actually in Aquas territory, so it'll be Aquas Water. And they're going to extend a sewer line all the way down to the city's, city limits. And, and they'll be taking wastewater from us.
At their cost.
So as part of their plat and their preliminary infrastructure that's been approved, we've agreed to take their wastewater. They will come back with more detail before the final plat where you'll see that kind of stuff then. So what you're seeing tonight, just the very preliminary, we know the drainage works. We know you're not going to flood. You've got good connectivity. We recommend that we move forward on the next step, which is the final public improvement plans, all of that good stuff. We work out the final details.
Can I give you guys an example? Can I give you guys an example? If this were a PDD, if this were a PDD, what you would see is the outline of the road, the outline of the houses. You'd see where the internal roads are going to be. You would see where the internal detention ponds. You'd see it. You would see it. And then you'd say, okay, we think that's a good idea. Go ye and make it work. So when we do the sausage making in the background, if we go, yeah, that detention pond's too small. You may need to size it or you may need to do this or orient it something different. This right here is ex-
This right here is exactly what I'm talking about. We have a very, very, very singular phase process. You don't see it all. And sometimes by the time you see it all, they're married to it and you might want to see a change. And we're like, that horse left the gate a while ago.
I'm going to, I'm trying to remember the amount of units that are actually in here, but this is one big lot. Yeah, there you go.
There's going to be 200 units.
200 units.
Yeah. Do, do you mind coming up and answering any questions that we might have?
Yeah. Um, I've also got, I've got our drainage and infrastructure plans here too. But, um, if anybody would like to see a site plan, we've got, uh, access and some internal roads. And they are, uh, going to be detached multifamily, uh, units. So we've got some parkland space and, um, an amenity center and dog parks. These are rentals, right? These are rentals. Correct.
Short-term rentals or?
No, uh, long-term rentals.
Will there be affordable housing as part of these short-term rentals?
Um, they are an affordable product. Um.
Are these tiny homes?
They are. They're smaller. Yeah. They're, um, micro units. They're, some are two-bedroom, some are one-bedroom.
So, uh, my question is just maybe even a concern, understanding development that comes just. But what kind of impact can we expect to the community around there? There's a lot of people that have lived there for a long time. Um, there's a small, close-knit family-type community right there next to it and as well as around. Uh, what kind of impact will this have on those people there? Cause 200 homes is a lot in comparison to about seven or eight that are right there.
Right. Uh, we are providing, um, we're improving that existing county roadway that's there to improve access. And we're not taking access off of that side road. It's just. Yeah, for sure.
So just to be clear, this is the preliminary plat, but all of the site planning has to happen at the county because it's in the county.
Okay.
So that's what they're, they're going to have to go to the county and the county will ask all those questions. The authority that we have in this area is the planning authority only, which is why you're seeing such a small piece of the overall project. We, we don't ask the questions. That's the county's questions to ask.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Troy.
For sure. Uh, and, and we have coordinated our access points and public improvements with, with the county as well. Yes, yes, it is approved by the county.
Um, I think it's, um, wonderful to see that, um, we're starting to expand further north. We obviously have a, a strong need for housing in the downtown district. Um, and I think the innovative approach of smaller, um, homes are going to be more affordable, which is desperate need in our community. Um, so I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Can we do the row?
Judah Ross.
Yes.
Kristy Coke.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did just want to add there, so they're not technically tiny homes. They're on permanent foundations still, so they're, that's why we're considering micro homes, but.
Google Casada Austin.
Yes. Really good community. Oh, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
All right. Updates please.
Okay, Commission, um, you saw the, uh, Iredelle District, um, suspension memo. We had talked about that briefly in, uh, the last, oh, over the last couple of months. Uh, one of the things that we need to, um, move forward with and make some determinations of what does that look like moving forward? Um, the pursuit of a historic designation as a city is what would allow us to create another overlay district like that. I think there are, um, some, uh, very positive pluses, uh, in creating a district beyond just what is of a historic home. Uh, and I will, I will tell you that from a practical perspective, we have a few homes, uh, right now that are going to go through remodel. Some of the homes are historic. Some of them are not, but have a character value to Bastrop. We really need to think about this one. This one should require some public comment. The Iredelle District, uh, as it was originally created, came with a pattern book. And I think that is where the rub is about, um, designating specific building materials. But I think there is a definite character type within certain boundaries of Bastrop that is appropriate. Where that district lies, the boundaries of what that district should be. Um, and then ancillary to that, a historic district, extending the boundaries of the historic designation district, if that's something that the commission, um, wants to entertain. In July, we're going to talk about, um, I said elimination slash amendment of the grid street system. I want to show you what it does. I want to show you what it doesn't do. I want to show you how much it costs. And then we need to make some determinations. Is it a 330 grid? Is it a 660 grid? Is it a no grid? Is it a, is it a T instead of a grid? I don't know. Is it a circle? I don't know, but we've got to talk about that because it has some long-term implications to not only the master plan we just talked about or the impact fees that we just talked about, but also, um, our road system and our ability to maintain roads moving forward. Um, there is a, uh, a definite conflict today with commercial development and that grid system. A definite conflict. I gave the example of the tractor supply. I can give you 100 examples right now of, of remodels of commercial where it, it's just funky and doesn't make sense. And perhaps we don't apply it to those kinds of things unless it's required in the transportation master plan. But again, something that we really, really need to visit and visit, uh, and, and just have a, just a long, hard dialogue. What does that look like? Um, in August, we'll be talking about what is that, um, what is the B three code? And in its either reduction or reduction of the footprint, what do we keep? What do we like? Where is that discussion? And then we go into a long process of, okay, what do we like? What are we keeping? How do we apply it? What are the real world examples of what doesn't work? Or what are the real world examples of what does work? Um, I told you earlier that, you know, we touted as affordable. I'm going to bring you some examples. It is sustainable and, and we use that term and we use that term loosely in that code. We say it's sustainable, but it is sustainable from a city perspective because the value goes up. It is not affordable and staff can raise their right hand and tell you that. And I might ask Trey to do just that. It is, it is, um, it is something that we have to talk about. It is a, we, we just got it. We just got to make the sausage up here and have that hard discussion about what makes sense and what, what are we asking of our residents? New development, that's, that's a little bit different because they're kind of planning from the ground up and we should be able to work through what should work. It's the existing stuff that we really have to work our way through. Austin home builders, they like some things in the, in the, in the building code. And I say Austin home builders because it's the larger guys. There are things they like in the building code, in the B three codes. That one thing is density. They like the density. Is that what we intended in authentic and historic Bastrop? Did we really intend 200 along seven? So those are things we have to talk about, the unintended consequences of, uh, what, where it should be applied, what it does to infill, and if we're really seeking affordability and, um, keeping our fellow residents in their homes. That's the next quarter. We're going to have a workshop that's open to public comment. Um, we'll make sure that we put an agenda item. We'll make sure we push it out really big on social media. So we'll have the workshop, as many hours as you guys want to spend with me. And then we'll have, uh, the meeting, the regular meeting.
I, I think this is great, uh, because I, I mean, I know at times we'll have to go through and review things.
We're not always going to agree. Not at all.
But I, I want to get us to a point where we're not always focusing on fixing the B three code. So if we can take this time and get things as best as possible, I'm all for it. Um, I know there have been some things that made things difficult for citizens. Even myself, I've looked at how the B three code would affect me or even people I know. So, um, I'm all up for it, you know, as many as we need to get to a good spot.
And again, if we, um, if we really want to talk about this from a, um, existing, what, what's in our code for existing residents and the people who already live here. And then we want to talk about this from a future, from a future development perspective, understanding the impact fees that are coming, understanding the, the demands on infrastructure that are coming. Absolutely appropriate to do that.
Right. And, and don't think I'm saying that the B three code was terrible. I, I think it was great, but it, there was some complexities in there that we can definitely fix. So, um, I'm all for it.
We're doing a lot with process on the backend, like a lot.
I can say I appreciate it. I'm sure we all do, you know? Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Um, item 4B. Development Service Department Monthly Project Volume Report.
Things are slowing down a little bit. Um, it doesn't feel like it, we do a development review. What I will tell you is our, um, and I apologize because I can't see those numbers because I don't have my glasses on. One of the, one of the greatest reliefs for staff has been, um, what I told you before, those standalone permits that they don't have to touch. We did work in an audit process. They are going through. They did catch some. They're, I mean, it's in single-digit percentages of what we're catching as opposed to what we were doing, um, in the long run. We have, um, this next highest is new single-family residences. We do have a, a good portion of, uh, because we don't have minimum lot sizes, we do have a good portion of infill development that's coming into the city of what had been just a normal-looking lot on Jefferson, for example, that's now going to be partitioned into two lots or three lots or however many. Uh, that is sometimes very scary to me because I, I'm, I'm not sure that what, what our residents had in their surrounding and their built environment matches that. I'm all about if it looks like the neighborhood and it looks like this and that, but what are the consequences to that? Five years down the road, 10 years, um, 10 years down the road. So some of that, we've, we've already begun having discussion with folks about hmm, that, that might not be the best use for that piece of property, but that is the code that we live on, that we live in today. So I suspect as we go back and revisit some of the numbers of what's allowed on a lot, we might have a rush on plats, uh, to subdivide really quickly. And that's, that's probably the, um, that's probably the hardest part about this code, about the unintended to that. Um, what I didn't put in there was parking in the first layer. And that is parking in the first layer for, um, existing and/or new. So we'll have to talk about either incentivizing a way out of that or to help people do that. Or if residents already have parking in the first layer and there is a, a significant remodel beyond what you guys approved in your, um, last meeting, what does that mean? You know, I used the Barbara Way example at the town hall. It's the only house in Riverside Grove that has a rear wrap garage because it was more than a 50%. Went from a 3-2 to a 2-2. Did we really mean to do that? And so those are the kinds of conversations. Um, staff is super busy. We train every single Wednesday. We sit from eight to 12. We sit at that back table and we go through everything from coloring a plat to, um, specific examples they've had during the week with questions. And, um, Kasepikas is our new process manager, so, um, documenting because consistency is important. Driving the, the message home is important. So I'm hopeful that there haven't been that many complaints anymore about development process and about our customer service that is, um, presented. Because like I said, these three ladies try really hard, uh, to not let it rise to that level. So happy to take any questions. Great.
If we don't have any questions, item 4C, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items be listed on future agendas.
I have a few requests and I have some comments if my fellow commissioners will bear with me. Um, I do request that we have a dual session with city council. I want to reiterate that we've asked for orientations a few times. And I would like the city staff to be able to provide us the information to be successful. Um, and to make educated decisions and opinions and all that other good stuff. Um, and I've got a few things to say, so I appreciate you guys' patience if I do so. Um, we've heard several times tonight, Commissioner Parsons said this and Commissioner, uh, Judah said this. I don't know Judah's last name.
Russ.
Ross, uh, said this is that, um, we're here to represent the public, right? And that's, that's always been my lens. My lens is to be here to represent the public, to express their concerns and then to make a suggestion to city council to make their decisions, uh, more easy to make, to make their job more efficient. And we would hope that they would trust us in doing so. Um, but recently, I feel hurt. I feel frustrated. I feel like there's a target on our back. There's a target on our back if we disagree. And unfortunately, I do not believe personally that's how it should be. Um, I wish I could have been there Tuesday night. Um, I know that my name was called several times. I signed up to speak. I wrote in to several of our city council members, uh, and, uh, reached out to a lot of people. Um, unfortunately, I was helping out the community by teaching a class at the Bastrop Public Library that evening. Um, I came briefly, um, and then decided that my health was more important and left because I get up at 4:00 AM to work before the heat sets in. Um, I would have been there to support my peers. I would have been there to represent the community and support the community. Um, and most importantly, I would have been there to listen to everybody. Um, we are a volunteer board. Um, we're here to support and streamline the process for the city council and move through the issues and task at efficient pace. To do so, we need to be supported. So that's why I request more information from the city staff. Um, I also request that the city council supports us and that they listen to us and that they don't, what in my personal opinion, attack us. Um, it was very unfortunate that multiple agenda items on the city council's, uh, uh, agenda the other night targeted planning and zoning. And I've asked why. I've gotten some good answers. But I think that we could have been set up for success if people would have set expectations with us, maybe pulled us aside for an executive session as well and educated us on what was going on and given us hard facts on what happened. We're not here to point out mistakes of other people. We're not here to embarrass anybody. But to make, um, decisions, we need factual information. And unfortunately, um, that has not been made public. I'm not requesting it be made public. I just want to know that this is how I make decisions is by factual information. Um, I believe that the city council set us, did not set us up for success by removing two of our board members. And we could have moved through items more quickly tonight if we would have known that this happened. I want to be clear. They publicly mentioned that they were removing two members because of a disagreement. That's not justified. That's a perfect example of injustice in a democracy. And I can't stand for that. Um, it was, it was pretty weird that even one of the commissioners contradicted himself multiple times while he was up here speaking. The most blatant one was when he gave an analogy about a coach and he mentioned, oh, disagreements happened. We're totally fine with that. But then the next statement was he mentioned, well, we disagree with them. They should leave. I, I can't stand for that as a person, as a community member. I believe that our community deserves better. And so I hope to work with people more. I hope to listen more. Um, and I hope that we can rebuild the trust that has been lost between the city council and me personally. Um, and I hope that we, as a commission, can continue to be supported by them to provide them the information that they need to do their job quicker. Thank you very much for listening to me.
So I, I would, uh, like to offer an apology first of all for you. So I, I would like to offer an apology, first of all, for you. Any perceived feeling ill will of anything we as staff could have done better. Because I don't disagree, if you don't have an expectation moving forward or you don't have an expectation of which your role is, then there's always going to be some kind of misunderstanding. Communication is hard, good communication is even harder. That being said, I like your part about you're here to represent the residents, not staff. We come and go, y'all. Don't defend me. Don't defend me. Defend Mrs. Piper. Defend everybody like Mrs. Piper, not me. You can beat me up all day long. Beat me up, not staff. But I don't want you to hang your hat on any one thing that any one particular staff member said. I want to be the bridge between you and council. I want to give you good information. Even if I hire a director tomorrow, you will see me at this podium. You will see residents in that seat. We got to stay on the straight and narrow. I want to help us get to a better place. The community, there's a lot of sort of backroom rhetoric happening. I can't fix that. I'd like to say it's BS before Sylvia. I can't fix that. I'm here today. I have a, a wealth of knowledge in multiple cities doing what I do, and I'd like to think that I'm a little bit good at it. But I can always be better, too. I'm not perfect. I don't intend to be. We are not always going to agree. Not at all. Not at all. But what I would hope is that we listen with neutral ears, both sides, myself included. We listen with neutral ears and not have already made a decision that we're going to say yes or no based on a personality or based on a person. We get ourselves into serious trouble when we do that. There are some staff changes that had to be made. I know there's a lot of feelings about that. I will tell you, the staff is appreciative of a lot of those changes. For the first time, having had the same training you're requesting, they've been requesting it for years, years. Viviana's been here twelve-plus years. She said this is the first time she has ever sat down, anybody's ever sat down with her and even explained to her the why. None of that is acceptable in any way, shape, or form, that you were kept uninformed and the staff is kept uninformed, when the staff is expected to execute something that they have no real understanding of its implications and to come up here and sell that to you as if they're going to die on the cross for it. I get it, it was hard work. I use the analogy that staff gave birth to a baby. We worked really hard on a code. It's an ugly baby. The baby needs some cosmetic surgery. It does. But I'm not going to go tell a mother that her baby's ugly. I'm not going to do that. Instead, we're going to work through it and hopefully at the end, we have a better product, we have a better baby who doesn't have any kind of issue moving forward. That's my goal. Beat me up, be mad at me, ask me any question. My phone is free. I get text messages all the time. I don't have anybody monitoring or mirroring my phone. That's me, I'm answering them. Just don't call me on a Sunday after six because that's a whole different story. But any other time, I am absolutely free. And I encourage this portion of the agenda, when you have a question or you have issues that weren't resolved, please ask me. I told you, I wouldn't bring you anything that I'm not actually showing you how we're going to put it through the process, to know what we're executing. We didn't know what we were executing in that B three code. I promise you, I promise you, I promise you. And if we did, the software doesn't match. The software cannot do what we are asking it to do, evidenced by you get in it and it doesn't save your application, it kicks you out. It's frustrating. So I want to help you guys be the bridge. I want to be the educator. I want to help you understand where we're going and why some things make more sense than others. That, that's my goal, that's my role, and I, I, I welcome any input or criticism or, or recommendations on how to do that better.
Well, I have a request then.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could explain to us why the city council removed the two councilmen, the two commissioners for being, I, I'm just going to say obstructionist and keeping things from moving along, what does that tell the rest of us? If they don't tell us, okay, we need to have it done by X date, or, you know, the fact that we're agreeing to come twice a month, every other Thursday we're here? If that's not fast enough for them, I mean, it's, I don't get it. I just don't understand what happened, which makes me nervous about how do I participate? Do I, do I need to be concerned that if I speak my mind or come up against something that, you know, is, that the staff doesn't want or that the commissioner, council members don't want? Am I going to be asked to be removed? If so, I'm just going to go now.
No. I don't, I don't think so, Commissioner Parsons, I don't think so. But what I would ask, and, and for whatever reason we are where we are, I think it, however long it took us to get here, we are where we are. What I would ask of you and every other commissioner up here is an open mind. That's it. That, that's all I can ask. We had several conversations as a staff about the, the consistent pinch points. There were things in development review on our agenda that have been there for months, months. Not acceptable. So is, is the burden on staff to move things forward? Yes, absolutely. But I, I firmly believe staff was so invested in a code that they were blinded by what they would bring forward to you. And I think some of that was supplemented and augmented by staff feeling like they were That's not the case because we're all, we're all subject to what our residents want.
Okay, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but my understanding is we now have new staff.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
The fact that we now have new staff, how, how does that impact, how did that impact Debbie and Carrie and the desire to have them removed? I don't get it. I'm sorry, Kristy, but I really do need to understand.
Well, some of that dialogue happened in executive session, so I'm not at liberty to share it, but I would encourage you to talk to each one of the council members.
Okay.
I really would. I, I...
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I'm in a unique position, being the newest member of the PNC board, so open mind is all I have. But I would like to make a comment to, I believe reinforce, some of the earlier comments that Commissioner Barrow mentioned, which is around the onboarding education process. I would love to see some optimizations there. I noted that on the council meeting, we are going to be including and mandating three members of the planning and zoning-related professions, which, which is interesting and that decision was made. But I think all of us have areas of contribution that we're bringing to, to this commission. Some have direct experience, some don't. So for, for those like me who are highly motivated, I would love to see a more formal kind of onboarding process as part of the, the joining of any board, but especially with planning and zoning, given the nuances, intricacies, and, and just importance of this board. So I'd love to see that as, as part of the new, new tipping point, new phase that we're in as, as a city, something to be considered.
And just, I guess, to kind of throw my little thing in there with it, you know, what happened to me as a, a member of the commission? Like, it, it brings about a big distrust with the council.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then, so if, if that, if I feel that way as a person who's involved, I can only imagine what a citizen thinks or, or when they see this, right? Like, where's the trust, where's the workability between the two groups? I, I, I have not had it or seen it since I've been on the commission, and I know for a fact that we've asked for it. And to me, we cannot have a healthy working relationship if we don't even know each other, right? You got to sit down and get to know each other and know how people think. Otherwise, you're going to be thinking all over the place and going all over the place with ideas and have misunderstandings as to why people chose something or was removed for something. Me personally, I really appreciated Carrie being on there with things that she had to say or questions she brought about, gave a lot of clarity to folks, helped me out at times, a lot of times I would want to ask a question and not ask because she took care of it. I'm not sure what happened behind the door. She definitely brought value. I think all of us do. As far as what Ashley is talking about with the onboarding and people coming in, I think it's definitely something needs to be considered about the cry, or what the people who are currently on here bring, right? I don't want it to be just a thing of, well, we have these three people here, they don't have some, the second kind of qualifications, so we're going to make sure we stick that engineer, that builder, or whatever up here. So I, I want those things considered. And again, I definitely want us to get to a place to where we have a great, healthy working relationship. We are actively involved with the council, council with us, that where we're making the right decisions, we're actively keeping the community involved. And if, and first and foremost, and I know it's hard because people on council are voting in and commissioners are selected, but it's, it's super important that the people we bring in are vested in Bastrop as a, as a community in building the people first before we're building, you know, we have to build, of course, but it starts within. And I don't want us to get to a point where we're forgetting about the citizens, right? With decisions that are made here, you know, with that choice, it, to me, it came off as we're more about progress and building and you're holding up our progress and building and we're not concerned about holding up things for the, the, the lower class or the, the people who can't, can't really do things for themselves like they want because they're jammed up, right? So it's, that's, that's my concern, right? I want to make sure that we're definitely trying to make things happen for the residents because Bastrop is not Bastrop without the residents. You can bring all the buildings you want, but it's not anything without the people. And if the people aren't happy, people aren't satisfied, don't think things are working for them, then we lose Bastrop.
Understood. And I think my, my role in all of that is, one, there are businesses that, that have been in our queue for, you know, short of a year, more than a year, that would have had a, either a sales tax and/or property tax impact. And as we're looking at the Parks Master Plan and we're looking at all of those things that create quality of life for our residents, where is that balance? The way we sit today in a very disjointed process, not the code, in a very disjointed process, isn't working for either residents or commercial businesses. And so my goal is, is not to shove development down your throat, not to, not to bring it as fast as I can bring it and approve it for the sake of approving it, but rather let it make sense and, and not put any barriers that don't make any sense because if we're not increasing the sales tax or we're not increasing the property tax and we have a continued demand on our services with police and fire and parks and libraries and streets, which is all part of the general fund, right? We have increased valuations, but the state has significantly impaired the city's ability to have any revenue or rate increases or things like that. So it's a balance that we're trying to manage. For me, of utmost importance will always be the residents. I've told you my background, I'm, you know, almost first-generation American here. I, poorest of the poor growing up. I know the impacts of things when you can't afford them or when you can't afford to pay your utility bill. Add a street fee to that because we're not growing, but our streets continue to deteriorate. It is a balance, and a balance, I don't want to price any of our seniors or any of our poor out of this community. I don't want to do that. But with that has to come a balance with commercial development. And if we are obstructionist for whatever reason, because we don't understand it, we're not really sure about it, it, that's the way it's written, I have too much work, whatever the reason it is, that's not acceptable either from a staff perspective. And so my balance is, is, I, I wish I could say it was a two-balance, but it's not, it's multiple balances. But primarily is how do I keep the residents in an affordable and good place to live? And it cannot happen without some of the other type of development that, that happens. So I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I am always cognizant of how do I manage it all? And it is manageable, but it has to be a well-tuned machine, I mean, well-tuned. When I got here, we weren't getting along with the county, weren't getting along with the school, hardly getting along with each other, not really getting along with our community partners. And, and I'd like to say I was on an apology tour, not apologizing for any one person in particular, but just apologizing for the lack of attention that we have given to relationships. And that is the same relationship that we haven't given, that same attention that we haven't given to our residents either. We, we haven't. I know that we haven't because I see them come through the door. These ladies hear them and go, why are we doing that? Can't we help? Can't we help them? Can't we help them? Are you sure we can't help them? So I, I hear you, but I, I, please hear me, rest assured, it's, it's a balance and I'm doing my damnedest to balance it, and I'm not forgetting about the little guy. I really isn't because that is what makes Bastrop Bastrop.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything?
You know, this, go ahead, Kristy, sorry.
No, just a quick thank you to our city manager and staff for the work you're doing. That's good.
If we want to think about efficiency, instead of naming a chair and vice chair at the next meeting, can we just get it over with tonight?
No.
No? Boom.
But we will, we'll put it on your very next agenda on the thirteenth. That being said, you have a workshop. If I can manage to wrangle the council, would you like a joint meeting on that very day as well? Okay, I'm, I'm nodding.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'll make it happen. Are you willing to start early so that I can feed you? Because we're going to be here for a while.
I'm good with being fed.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds good. Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Truly, I want to echo what Carrie said. Your work is important and it is appreciated and it does not go unnoticed. You are specifically mentioned in the ethics ordinance because your work has a lot to do with property rights and it has a lot to do with human rights. It does not go unnoticed that the work that you're doing is uber-important to how we shape our community.
All right. If we don't have anything else, item five, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. I need to make a motion to adjourn.
He's getting excited.
I'm excited, ready to go.
Yeah, let's you get away with the first one, but not both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, have you guys met Doug, our newest planner?
Hi, Doug.
Hello, Doug.
Doug comes to us from, from Wyoming.
Yes.
Wow.
Welcome to Texas summer.
Yeah, welcome to the heat.
Well, thank you, guys. Looking forward to working with you, you know, working through all the processes that we got in place here. And, you know, I think that by the end of it, like Sylvia says, we'll come out with a better product and, yeah, excited about the future, so looking forward to working with you.
Looking forward to working with you, too.
Thank you all very much. We adjourned at what time?
Motion?
We need to make a motion. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good night.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.